If you would, let's take a moment of silence so each of us can reflect on our own faith and its place in our work here today. And if you would not, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We're all, I believe, all board members are present along with Superintendent Brett Boggs, Assistant Superintendent Blaine Conley, and Recording Secretary Jessica McFarland. Upcoming board meetings: February 12th, 2018, regular meeting at the Tippy Valley Middle School at 7:00 PM; March 12th, 2018, regular meeting, Tippy Valley High School, 7 o'clock PM; and April 16th, 2018, regular meeting at Akron Elementary at 7:00 PM. Now we'll go into the reorganization of the school board. Okay, deadlines for board reorganization. ISB attorney says questions need to be held only one time per semester. This is the annual meeting to reorganize the school board. I will now accept nominations for Office of President. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Adam.
Adam Heckman for President. Do I have a second?
I'll second that nomination.
Brian seconds that. All in favor by saying aye. Aye. Adam, that's all yours.
You're gonna be taking them there, huh?
Yes.
Alright. I'll accept nominations for Vice President.
I'll nominate Aaron.
There's no further nominations. I'll close nominations and I guess raise your hand, say aye, all in favor.
Aye.
Alright. And I will now accept nominations for the Office of Secretary.
I'll nominate Stan Miller for Secretary.
I'll second that.
Well, if there's no further nominations, I will accept a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make that motion to close that nomination.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We just need a motion?
Yeah, each, each year we appoint the Corporation Treasurer, typically those positions.
Motion for Jessica McFarland at TBR.
I'll make that motion, Jeff would move our trade.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I guess we'll move right on to Spotlight in the Valley.
We've got one more to do, and that is for the dates, time, and place. Well, right now, we meet the second Monday of each month at Mentone Elementary School in the public meeting room. We start at 7 o'clock. And then, of course, we have one meeting each year in each school. So, we need to decide boardings inside now, again, time, location.
I'll make the motion to keep it as is.
All in favor, they keep the meeting time and place. Time each month, second Monday, the same, aye?
Aye.
With the welcome and introduction of the new employees.
I don't think we have any of our new employees here.
Number two, recognition of the high school student recipients of the Rising Star Indiana Award.
And, Mr. Kreip, if you would, come tonight and speak about the four students who have been recognized as Rising Stars.
Sure. Thanks for letting me be here, guys. We've got some really good things to share with you tonight, some really exciting things. We have two of our four Rising Stars. I think the weather, I did let the kids know, if couldn't quite get here, that's okay tonight with everything, but because of your support for my membership into the Indiana School Principals Association, one thing that we get to do every year is you get to nominate up to four juniors that have shown excellence in academics. And the idea is that each school that's in, that has a principal that isn't a member, a membership allows you to nominate up to four students. So what we did at the high school is we met as our leadership team and discussed that, you know, who we thought was the most deserving juniors that have done a great job in their academics, give them an opportunity to go on a list with all the other juniors that were nominated in the state. This list gets put forward to colleges and scholarships and really gives them not only a nice thing to put on their applications, but also some very well-deserved recognition for their hard work and efforts. This is certainly a big deal, and it's an honor, and I want to present, give you all four names, but certainly present you two of the four here tonight. Okay? So, also our school board representative, we have Dylan Wood. Okay? Dylan was, and all four were unanimous selections for sure, and we also have Elijah Holder here tonight. Okay? So, these two fine young men will represent us, our junior class this year, as the Indiana All-Stars, which is a big deal. The other two nominees were Shaylee Schreiber and Olivia Ellenwood. So, we're really excited, and thank you guys very much for coming tonight, and I've got your certificates, we can give them to you for you, Lee. Okay?
Would you guys mind sharing what maybe some of your future goals are after high school? What's your plans?
I really don't know.
No, no, no?
Eli, jump up and say something.
Okay.
I plan on trying to go to Purdue's engineering program.
We might have to pull this thing.
Glad to hear that.
Well, that's great. Good deal. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Alright, we'll move on to recognition of high school teachers, Erin Eastgate, Kristen Eckhoff, Naomi Ponce, and June Yezel.
Very good. So, got more getting used for you to share tonight too, and we'll kind of split this up into two groups. Let's first start, we got Mrs. Eckhoff, Kristen Eckhoff is here tonight, you can stand up, okay? Erin couldn't be with us tonight, but these two ladies just received a very prestigious grant. At University of Indy right now, they have something that's called the CELLE program. CELLE stands for the Center of Excellence in Learning and Leadership. And what they have is they have a grant where, a very, very competitive grant, where you have teachers and STEM teachers, science, technology, engineering, and math. And both Kristen and Erin are excellent math teachers, and what they want to do is they give you an opportunity that if you do get this, it's called the STEM Teach Grant III. This is the third round for it, and what they'll do is if you get the grant, it allows you to go back to college and earn your masters, right? And it's a grant, so the good news is, they pay for it, right? That's a good deal. So, you know, this is a super big deal because, you know, not only are we going to have two teachers that are going to have their work towards getting their masters and moving through, but they're also going to become dual credit. As I came to you, I remember the very first board meetings, I came, one of our goals is to improve our dual credit offerings and to get teachers dual credit certified. So to have both Kristen and Erin in mathematics at Tippy County Valley High School is a huge deal, and I'm very, very thankful and appreciative for all their hard work, and very glad that CELLE and University of Indy is going to be picking up the tab for them. So, that's a big deal. So, give them a... Alright, and then the other part, I've got June Yezel here, just back from Hawaii, noticed the pen. I'm jealous, she should have seen the picture she was sending us, but no. We're very, very glad. Mrs. Ponce couldn't be here tonight, but both Mrs. Yezel and Mrs. Ponce were just recently accepted into the ACP program through the Indiana University. ACP stands for Advanced College Project, and what it is also is another dual program. What is happening is many universities, Indiana University right now, is trying to kick it in gear to how can they provide opportunities for teachers that want to go back to school and get their dual credit certification, they're saying, okay, well, we'll let you teach dual credit, and then we'll help you along the way through the Advanced College Placement Project. We currently have one or two other classes right now at the high school that are in the ACP program, that would be Mr. Walker's Senior English, and then Mr. Schreiber has ACP Political Science or Government. So this again, along with our dual credit in mathematics and having this program, and then now we're going to add, Mrs. Yezel will have ACP US History, which will be a very nice addition, and then we will also have, Ms. Ponce will be able to teach ACP Spanish II, III, and IV, which again, just expands our dual credit program, is just a great opportunity for our kids to take advantage of, and I really want to thank Mrs. Yezel for taking the time, and congratulate her and Mrs. Ponce for being a part of that program. It's not, it's not an easy program to get in, and it really expands our relationship with Indiana University. But no, the great thing about these classes too is that they are on the Core Transfer Library, which means every school has to take them. So this is really, really good, and really strengthens our dual credit program, and so thanks to all these teachers, and it's really exciting to build that program at the high school, and so really thankful for Mrs. Yezel and Mrs. Eckhoff for being here tonight.
Thank you, Chad.
We're going to move on to update on the Alternative Education Program here at Burkitt.
Just to go through a few things to begin with, thank you for your time this evening. Our Alternative Program began in the fall of 2003 to help students who had fallen behind or had some difficulties in their educational experience. This is the 15th year of our alternative school. We've had a lot of success throughout the years that we're very proud of, including 310 graduates and 22 former graduates who went on to military service. This year, we have a group of students, we've served 44 students throughout the course of this year at different times, not all at one time, but at different times. Credit, there's criteria for why students are allowed in an alternative school, and in the breakdown this year, we had 52% of our students were here because they had fallen behind on their credits and needed extra help. We had 12% who were here due to either pregnancy or health trouble or different things like that. 9% of our students were here because they were sort of living on their own and had to work part of the day in order to make their ends meet. We had 18% of our students who were here due to alternative, due expulsion, and then another, 9% of our students came here in lieu of quitting school or had planned on quitting school had they not come here. So far, our results, we have 26 students who are still enrolled here, and 12 have completed all their credits that they need for graduation, and we've had two expelled for misbehavior. Semester one, we've had over 200 credits earned, figured up to right around five credits per student. Students earned 1,132 units on the first semester, an average of 27.6 per student. Students do their work here at Burkitt using the Apex Learning System, that's an online learning system. There's over 50 classes on that system that students can get all the requirements they need in order to earn their Core Forty diplomas, and however quickly they're able to master that material is how quickly they're able to move on. One thing we implemented, started to implement strongly last year was individual help time. We found a lot of students were needing that, some of the skills and know-how to understand what's going on, and we also found that investing time in each individual student helped to greatly motivate them to want to succeed. In the first quarter, we spent between myself, the teacher formerly known as Ms. Woodward, now is Mrs. Shroff, she was married this break, and a new, I'd like to acknowledge Dewey Gayheart, he was a graduate last year who came back and is helping to tutor students here at Burkitt as a volunteer. Between the three of us, we had 6,800 minutes individually with students, that's one-on-one or two-on-one at our desk, and including also another 8,500 minutes in quarter two, for a total of over 15,000 individual time minutes. Another thing that was, Mr. Kreip brought in at the high school level and we also took on was a lot more time to spend on ECA preparation and I-Step preparation. Students spend a chunk of period each day who need either math or English in a class to help get skills to help better them in those. We do not have the I-Step test scores in yet, but we do for math, excuse me, we do for the ECA. In math, the average student who took the course went up 33 points on their test, and in the English portion, they went up 45 points from their remediation. Last year, we had a group of students who came to us and said they really like doing the work on the Apex, but they're still struggling a lot on mathematics, so we implemented an algebra class that was more like a traditional classroom with the students who had not passed algebra and things. And we used that same format this year, instead of algebra though, we have geometry, and we had six students earn credit in that geometry class so far this year, and three others who have a few things to finish up in order to earn credit for that. We also have a JAG program here at Burkitt. JAG stands for Jobs for American Graduates. Ms. Tanya Voep is the director of that, and it's through the Work One Program at Cosco Esco County, and we have several students who are active members in that as well. So students get a wide variety of experiences. Mr. Eck, not Mr. Eck, Mr. Ingbricht, a teacher at the high school, comes and meets with students who have jobs. We have several students who have jobs here at Burkitt, and they are able to earn credit for those jobs because he teaches the work-based competencies that they need in order to get those credits, and that's a big help for students as well. I invited four students to come here tonight to celebrate what they've accomplished here at Burkitt. Unfortunately, I don't see any of them in attendance, but I'll kind of give you some highlights of what they were able to do. First, we had Jason Anthony Schaefer. Jason entered this year as a senior. He came to Burkitt due to getting expelled from the high school, and came here instead of missing the rest of his senior year, would go against our graduation rate, and would go against his future, he was able to come here and continue school. He's a very intelligent, respectful student, and was able to finish all the classes needed for his Core Forty diploma. He still attends school here two days a week for the JAG program. He will be competing in representing Burkitt at the CDC District Competition with his focus being on writing. CDC competitions, like a competition that we do with area schools, they can win scholarships and different things like that. And his goal is to go on to college to study, become a radiation therapist. Next, we had JJ Holmes. JJ came here last year as a junior because he was behind on credits and really struggled with his attendance. He became a strong member here at Burkitt and really fit in well with the online learning, and one of the reasons was he's a very shy and timid young man, and he has trouble speaking out what he thinks sometimes, and that really helped him. Currently, JJ is studying for the JAG program, and he works at Teal's Restaurants. Many of you have been there, and he helps to make the food and things, so thank him. His attendance this year has been outstanding. At one point, he had missed, I think, just a lot of school, and it was really hurting his progress when he was at the high school, but he's up to 96% attendance rate here this year. His goal down the road is to become a CNA, because he has a big heart for helping others. Thirdly, we had Miranda Morrison Salas. This was her second year here at school. She came here due to a pregnancy. She worked extremely hard to graduate and reach her goals. She had great attendance, attitude, and work ethic. She graduated halfway through the first semester this year. She was determined to build her life for her son Miguel. She was also a member of the JAG program, and they set her up with an internship at Zimmer Biomet, and she's worked her way up to the position of an inspector where she's currently employed. Eventually, she wants to continue her education and provide for her son down the road. And last but not least, we have Kyla Bartley. Kyla's been a student here for quite some time. She entered halfway through her 10th grade year. She was far behind on credits, was really struggling to attend school, and was considering dropping out. She worked hard to improve her attendance and really fit in well here at Burkitt. Subjects, she had a lot of difficulty, but she was not afraid to get help when she needed it. This is her 13th year of school, and she has a lot to be proud of. She did finish all of her credits, and now she holds a job at Dollar General, and is also a member of our student government. I regret that none of those students are able to be here tonight, but I'm sure they'll be at the graduation, because they're all pretty dependable usually. Also, speaking of graduation, our Burkitt graduation date is May 10th, 2018, in the Historical Gymnasium at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you, Micah.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to items from the visitors. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board? No? Well, I guess we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Number one, approve minutes of the December 7th executive session. Number two, approve minutes of the December 11th regular meeting and executive session. Number three, approve the hiring of the following personnel. Nicole Dennis, Instructional Assistant at Mentone. Shaylee Lewandowski, Instructional Assistant at Mentone. Kim Overmeyer Cook at Mentone. Shelley Finney, ECA Treasurer at Akron. And Melinda Kruger Cook at Akron. Number four, approve the following extracurricular assignments. Amanda Medley, Math Team at Mentone. Fonda Reiman, Math Team at Mentone. Number five, accept the resignation of the following personnel. Sarah Davis, Instructional Assistant at Mentone. Marlo Hudson, Instructional Assistant at Akron. Chris Jones, Instructional Assistant at Mentone. Dana Thompson, Assistant Track Coach at the high school. Number six, accept the retirement of the following personnel. Brett Boggs, Superintendent of the School Corporation. Number seven, approve the termination of the following personnel. Tanya Quintana, Custodian at Akron. Number eight, appointment of the corporation physician, Francisco Negros. Number nine, appointment of Ryan McFarland to the Akron Carnegie Public Library Board. Number 10, approve the overnight trip, high school wrestling team to the semi-state tournament. Number 11, approve the overnight trip, the high school wrestling team to the state tournament. Number 12, approve out-of-state field trip for the high school seniors. Number 13, approve the 2019 high school senior trip. And number 14, approve the conflict of interest statements for the following board members. Stan Miller, Todd Hoffman, Brian Murphy, and Adam Heckman. Gentlemen, is there anything that you would like to pull out for further discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the gentle, the gentle gentle, you ready?
All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Adam, can you say something about Brett and his retirement? I don't know if Brett wants anything to say, you know, I think we appreciate the years of service that Brett's put forth for Valley, and I think he's going to be missed, and you know, it's just something that we'll give Brett a chance to sleep if he wants to or say something. I put you on the spot, though.
No, no, that's, it's been an honor to serve at Tippy Valley for 40 years. This is all, this room was my fifth grade, fourth grade classroom as an elementary student, so it's been a great place to be as a student, and as a teacher and coach and administrator. I really appreciate it here, so I would like to thank the board for the opportunity that you've given me, years, and all the kids, and the parents, and community folks I've had a chance to work with. It's just been an honor. Thank you.
We'll move on to business items, approval, claims in favor.
Now, we have one free red claim listing this evening, and it's dated December 31st, 2017, in the amount of $2,989,389.81. And then our regular claim listing is dated January 15th, 2018, in the amount of $145,298.91. And we have two payrolls this evening. The first is dated December 8th, 2017, in the amount of $430,667.52. And the second is dated November 24th, 2017, in the amount of $478,928.26. I will submit these claims for payroll.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion for claims in favor? Todd makes that motion?
I'll second.
Stand in seconds. All in favor, raise your right hands, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to financial report.
The board has been provided with the reconciled bank statement and the monthly financial report of funds for the month of January 2017. So in summary, our receipts, our disbursements for December of 2017 are total receipts for all funds, $5,159,382.27. And the total receipts for all funds, $4,159,755.71.
Move on to whole business. Update on the Akron Elementary School project.
Good evening. Congratulations, Spox. Good for you, happy. It's been a pleasure working with you. Of course, when I started working on the project, I've got a little bit more work to do. Last month, we, you guys were on Christmas break, so that allowed us to get a part of the work done, do some areas, cafeteria. the work done with some areas, cafeteria, all the flooring got installed in there, we were able to take down some of the temporary partitions. Gym, the wood floors finished, final coat of sealer, or finished coat went on Friday. We have the coat base put around the perimeter still, wall padding and bleachers. That'll all start on Monday. They wanted that, they wanted that floor to adhere probably before you start putting some headers with it on there. So that'll take place Monday, and it should be done by the end of the week. And our school should be able to start doing licensing for the following Monday. So locker rooms off to the gym are off, finished. Cleaning crew being here tomorrow, put those clean. Same here, there's a couple of public restrooms right off the side of cafeteria, those are off, finished. Cleaning crews in there today, got those cleaned. We had about five classrooms left on that far west side of the building. Those are off, finished, and they're being cleaned right, they were cleaned today. So tomorrow, we'll be back to do a little bit more cleanup. There's the two restrooms that we had to redo work over in the existing building. Those are off, finished, and those are being cleaned tomorrow. So what we'll be down to is doing the hallway carpet on that west side, and then there's a workroom, just found it in the middle court, and then the media center, which is, everybody's starting out there probably Thursday. So by the end of, end of, middle of, right, middle end of next week, the classroom, the media center and all the big work is done. We've been going through, doing walk-throughs, doing punch lists, checking on a few things, making sure everything's touch okay, if it's not, whatever's missing. So the guys, it's still be in and out, you know, as things become available from the techs that we take care of, but we're trying to get most of that done by the end of the month, so that way, come February. There's going to be some things outside, it could be a little bit of a landscaping and a little weather. We have the playground area, the temperature's got us, and it's like a rubber mulch, so we couldn't really get that put down, so that'll probably... Hopefully, we get a warm spell in late February or March, maybe this last two weeks. Any questions?
So the school on the inside will be done by the end of this month, man?
Oh yeah. It should be done, well, I'd say January 26, so we have, on the week before, yeah, it might be roughly. And we had a few big ups, you know, some of that stuff. We got into that locker room area, and I wasn't here for all of this, so I'm kind of trying to get caught up on what was going on, but I know there were some issues with how much that existing building could be demoed, and then when they ran in, we unsuited the soils, they had to make that trench wider so they can dig down deeper to replace that, and that started approaching on that existing building, so we're worried about it getting undermined. It wasn't a good situation, and therefore, we decided to just stop on that, but we'll get it from the school, it's out, and it's building, and...
Was the library going down?
Library grids in, ceiling tiles in, lights are all in. They're going to set the cabinets in there, there's a reception desk area, we're going to set those tomorrow, and then carpet guy might be in there by the end, he should be in there by the end of the week.
When they gonna be ready to start resetting shelving and putting the books back in there?
I don't know.
It's all out of high school right now.
Yeah. I would say practice Wednesday. As soon as the carpet guy gets there, I would be very excited. Tomorrow, the case looks torn in, and the carpet follows it, and that's when we're going to start bringing the works in. But he wants to take that hallway, because it goes into the library, so he wants to make sure that looks good when it comes down the hallway. And then as soon as he gets done with that, there's four or five classrooms should be occupied, especially on the roof. It's going to be probably a little bit busier than the last month, I mean, January, just giving kids and teaching back to their final home, which is always a good thing. And I think we got dedication marching through.
Good luck.
Good luck. Excited.
Search quiz, the picture that's up there.
Oh, yeah.
The railing beneath that, you know where that came from?
I was reading that. I don't even know where it came from, so...
That was actually in the old high school, that you came out that main entrance there in front, there was this railing. We took that and put it in the 87, it was, it was there, and then we put here. This, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's, this house over wall, this is all hardwood, Mike Lumber company. They donated all of that. We have two, two of those right there, that's this one, and one, when you come in, this entrance, it's off to the right, correct?
No. This is, this is off to, up into the cafeteria.
Where's the other one at?
It's up right, it's not eye here, because it's good up for...
It's the main office.
It's in the main office, as soon as you walk in, the main office entry.
Okay. Well, that's the one that's, you're right, you're right. And then we also have the desk in the office, looks a lot like that.
And the one at the media center.
The media center looks like, also, Mike Lumber donated, a very deal of hardwood.
When are we going to be using that entry in unit B? Are we using that now as far as the buses coming in, when's that going to be?
By the 26.
By the 26, as far as the buses coming in and all that?
That's when we'll have it done, and you guys can use it. I'm not sure, Chris, he wants to transition until they can have adjustment.
That's also the area that when the middle school kids, high school kids come in the morning to wait for shovels, they'll wait. Outside, there's a very nice lawn.
Big lawn.
That's a big lawn, so the weather's warm, they can stand there to be out the rain.
Even that area, that space in between, it's a pretty big site, good size. There's a couple benches that will go in there as well, that'll be here tomorrow as well. Just a little gym.
Gym looks nice.
Yeah, it does. You have that RK4 here.
Right, run faster, Jen, by a lap.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good night.
Straight purple shirt. All right. Move on to new business, and accept grant from Smith Strong Foundation.
Right. These grant funds were awarded by the Smith Strong Foundation Fund. Those funds are used to provide support to the school corporation for an annual Smith Strong Award, and that award is presented to an outstanding student athlete at Tippecanoe Valley High School, and someone that closely exemplifies the values that Charlie and Scott Smith demonstrated daily in their lives. So we recently received that, and we'd like the board to go ahead and approve that grant from the Smith Strong Foundation Fund.
Anyone do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion here. I'm sorry, I forgot.
All in favor to accept the grant from Smith Strong? Raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approve resolution to transfer appropriations.
Well, at the end of each year, we transfer appropriations within funds, so we don't end the year with any line items or classifications with a negative appropriation. The transfers do not require the expenditure of any additional amounts of money, other than what has been previously approved in our budget. The board authorization is granted through the approval of a resolution identifying the necessary transfers. So we're asking the board to adopt the resolution to transfer appropriations within the general fund budget.
Do I have a motion to approve the transfer of appropriations?
I'll make the motion, Adam.
Who makes that motion?
I'll second that.
Brian seconded that. All in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I think that's all we have for you tonight. We'll go to our student representative, Dylan.
Well, the school enjoyed their four-day break. It was really nice. Basketball games are still going on, and baseball, track, and archery are having practices.
Now, Dylan, there's a competition coming up here at Woodco. Has that been held yet?
No, it's the 20th, it's on the Sunday, 21st or 22nd.
Okay, so it's coming up here soon.
Mm-hmm.
Are we prepared and ready to go? I know you're an archer.
Yeah, so my, during our delays have been hurting us, because we don't get practice in the morning.
So we've got, I guess, this meeting's adjourned. We'll move on to our board of finances meeting.